Welcome everyone to our board meeting of December one, which is our regular meeting. What we will do first is because we do have people who are with us telephonically or visually on the Facebook live, what we'll do is have Ms. Harden, our City Clerk, do a roll call and then I will call the meeting to order. So Ms. Harden, if you would please.
Alderman Carter.
Here.
Alderman Sistro.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Martin.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We do have a forum and not only that, we have everyone in attendance, which is always great and I appreciate that. We will call the meeting to order. We will start with a pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation from Alderman Vaughn and then amulet of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance, this is one of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we're connected, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Vaughn, can you speak?
Better swear. Most holy y'all lives, all knowing, all powerful, feeling, all hearing, all understanding God. Father God, again, his effec- hence his service, the man is born and all of again coming for you, his partner here is and fit employee coming for you again, not for no shape, form, or fashion, nor outside show to the world, we come to give you thanks and praises for what you already have done for us. And just thanking you again so much for your angels that watched over us all day long today, your Holy Spirit that directs us back to this appointed place. Father, we just want to say thank you. We ask you that you will please forgive us of all our sins, Father God, in the name of Jesus, praying that you would direct all our thrones. Father, that we always look at the heart of man the way you look at the heart of man. Father, we thank you. And Father, we know that love will overrule all, conquer all the hate. Lord, give us a loving heart. Teach us to love the way you loved us. We just thank you so much, Father God, praying that you bless us all individually, collectively, and one by one. Father, you know all the projects that we have in store, all the projects that are in the making. We pray, Father God, that all those will end up as success. And we just stop and give you all the praise and honor and glory to you because of who you are and what you are. Father, we just thank you again so much for being our God and we your servant, being our Father and we your little children. Thank you again for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. And we pray for all our COVID-19 victims, Father God, the cases are still going high, but you still are God and still high and looking. We ask you to touch all those that are suffering, right now from their coughing, the coughing their family, Father God, that is dealing with their loved ones going through this COVID-19. But we know that you is able to do all things for sale. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, our first order of business is to approve the official agenda with consented items. And part of having this, uh, meeting with telephone and, uh, using the video, we will go, uh, person by person. Award to determine if there are any changes and also to take a roll call vote on each and every vote. So, um, I will start with, uh, Alderman. Alderman Carter, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I don't, other than what we spoke about earlier with recycling, what will, what will happen with that agenda item?
Uh, I, I, well, I believe it was taken off of the, um, agenda. Is that correct? No, it was not. Uh, Alderman Beatty, uh, let me ask you.
I understand, yes.
Uh, yes.
Briefly.
Hold on, Alderman Carter, I'm gonna let Alderman Beatty answer that question.
Alderman Carter, we've, um, have been working with the Starkville Recycling Committee, um, on a proposal to possibly restart the recycling program in City Starkville. And we'll have, I just didn't have enough information and stuff to put the, put the information together and enough time to disseminate that to the board. But hopefully, we'll, we'll have that by the Friday work meeting on the eleventh of this month. We can all, um, get information about it, have some, a couple of presenters, and then have time for questions and things, and then take it up at the meeting on fifteenth of August.
Uh, did that answer your question, Alderman Carter?
It does. Thank you, Alderman Beatty.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and what we'll do, if it's acceptable, I'll just go ahead from the table here and say we will remove that item from the agenda without objection. Okay, all right. Alderman Carter, uh, if there are no more changes from you, I'll move to Alderman Sistro.
Yes, ma'am, please do. Thank you.
I have one, just for the sake of clarity, uh, I'd like to amend the suggested motion for the holiday schedule.
Okay.
Um, to say that, um, we approved the 2021 holiday schedule for the City of Starkville and contingent on the Governor of the State of Mississippi designating Friday, November twenty-sixth, and Friday, December twenty-fourth, as paid holidays by proclamation. Um, and then the city may designate additional days as paid holidays. Um, typically, those days are granted by the Governor. We don't have statutory authority to, to grant those, but this is covering our base, so if the Governor does grant those days as he has traditionally done, uh, we, we will have that set up. If there are changes, if the Governor becomes a Scrooge, we'll, we'll amend the schedule and amend the, the, um, trash pickup as well.
Thank you. Any objections to that modification as Alderman Sistro has stated it? Okay, hearing none, we will, we will leave that on the consent agenda with that modification. All right, if you know the changes, Alderman Sistro.
No, ma'am, I have none.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am. Under Department Business, under Engineering One, I need to recuse myself from that vote that is currently on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Alderman Walker. We can make that in the notes and still leave it on consent. Is that accurate, Mr. Alderman?
That's fair.
All right, so with your permission, Mr. Walker, Alderman Walker, we will show you as recused from that item, but, but retain it on the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, as long as it's in the minutes that way, that's fine.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other changes?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am, uh, from the same, from the engineer, um, but instead of trying to give us a little insight on this, because I had a couple of questions I asked about it. But just trying to explain, explain that a little bit for the public, not for you to understand.
Okay, encroachment agreement?
Yeah, right.
Yes, anytime that a sign encroaches on the city right of way, we just have that landowner fill out the encroachment agreement. So we know that that's a temporary encroachment, that's not a permanent encroachment. We're not giving up any right of way or any ground. We're letting them use that, uh, permissively.
If I may add, we're not responsible for fixing it. If something happens to it, that's not our responsibility either.
Okay.
You can help Alderman Vaughn. All right, well, seeing, seeing no more, uh, discussion about the agenda or consented items, do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items as modified?
Oh, sure.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the City Clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
Alderman Sistro.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
All right, thank you all. That is unanimous, and I will now read the consented items. Under Board of Alderman Minutes, it's consideration of the November first, twenty-twenty meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the Minutes of the November thirteenth, twenty-twenty work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the Minutes of the November seventeen, twenty-twenty meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, consideration of extending the proclamation of a local emergency due to COVID-19 virus and additional thirty days. Under Board Business, we have consideration and adoption of the twenty-twenty-one City of Starkville holiday schedule and the twenty-twenty-one sanitation holiday schedule with the changes as denoted by, uh, Alderman Sistro. B is consideration of a Section Three Plan Resolution for the Babylon Road Sewer Community Development Block, Development Block Grant, CDBG project. C, consideration of a maintenance plan resolution for the Babylon Road Sewer Community Development Block Grant, CDBG project. Under Engineering, consideration of the encroachment agreement for the monument signage associated with the preserve at Huntington Park and authorization for the Mayor to sign on the city's behalf. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Dylan Keaton as a certified police officer in Starkville Police Department. Under Police Division, we have request approval to purchase from Cannon Motors of Mississippi fourteen Dodge Chargers, PPV V-eight, at state contract pricing, up sit and striping that would be done by Cannon in Greenwood and delivered to Starkville. And ready to patrol for a total of four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, with the City Clerk CFO to advertise for financing. B, consideration to allow Chief Mark Ballard to attend the Mississippi Association of Chiefs of Police Twenty-Twenty-One Winter Educational Conference in Jackson, Mississippi, January the twelfth through January the fifteenth, at not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. C is consideration of a rental agreement to replace the existing Canon copier with a Canon Image Runner Advanced DX two-five-seven IF copier. Under Utilities, we have one authorization to declare the two thousand and three Chevrolet one-ton dump truck body and cab only. VIN number one DBJ six-four U seven-three E three-three zero-three nine-eight. As surplus, an option on above deals and authorization to purchase a similar vehicle replacement from state contract and not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And that concludes the consent agenda item.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I had one question I forgot to, uh, to ask earlier. On the police, fourteen Dodge Chargers, would there be any, any additional electronics or anything computer system bought, or is that a final price? It said ready to control, but I mean, obviously, they're just gonna, they're gonna take the computers out and just swap them over to the new cars. Is that, is that correct?
All right, Alderman Carter, in recognizing that question, Chief Ballard, would you be so kind as to address that question, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you. Uh, Alderman Carter, if, uh, the computers were transferred over without any issue, uh, we intend to transfer some of our camera works, but we're in the process of relaunching for the body cameras, so that won't be included in it. But once we have, we'll cross over, but they are in meetings, so there'll be something we'll be looking to address in the next few months.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Carter?
Absolutely. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, uh, first, uh, the next item is under Mayor's Comments, and I want to, I want to wish everyone, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I want to acknowledge that, um, while the city has had a mask mandate for several months, months now, uh, I was told today that now Ockebah County, while they just reinstated, the Board of Supervisors reinstated their mask mandate, the Governor has now included Ockebah County as a mask mandated area under the Governor's executive order. So I want to acknowledge that and say that out loud for camera and for those who may be listening to this, uh, to this broadcast of our meeting. So, um, another thing I'd like to say is that, uh, while we did not have a Christmas parade last night, uh, I want to commend the, um, the Methodist Church and the partnership for getting together and creating sort of a retrospective of, um, parades over the years and a bit of a nostalgia to go with that. So, uh, I might recommend that if you want a little holiday cheer, that you, uh, tune up there. I think they got it running on Facebook as well as on the, on the public access channel for that Methodist, that the Methodist Church runs. Um, and other than that, I have nothing further. There any Board of Aldermen comments available, uh, anything anyone wants to say? Alderman Carter?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Sistro?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, mayor, thank you.
And Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, and let me say, while I'm thinking about it, Vice Mayor Perkins is going to, uh, do the grand opening for the Holiday Bazaar tomorrow at the mill, which I thank him for filling in for me, and that should be sort of the start of the holiday season in terms of the Holiday Bazaar being a, a big deal around town. So hopefully, everyone will have a chance to, chance to go and enjoy. Uh, next we-
Thanks for the opportunity, Mayor.
You are very welcome, and I appreciate you filling in for me. Uh-
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, citizens' comments next. Those who wish to say anything on their citizen's comments, you have to do so. And, uh, we will time you. You can talk about anything you like. Um, just be kind, it is the season. You can come on up, Mr. Turner. Is that what you're asking? Oh, well, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. No, you can come on up. It's quite all right. You got your mask on and, and we'll stay, we'll stay distant. And we need you at the mic.
The Mayor's Board, we're into May of forty-two, uh, five years, and to, uh, and I'm down to walk seven, um, we, and we have come a long way, but we still, yes, we have to be watching. Uh, we don't know what the man did, that, uh, this year comes a close of me, yeah. Well, plus the storm, so, uh, and so, you know, the chief of the train for the office that I feel, uh, we, we have to be on watch. Yeah, we don't know what, uh, if that's why, you know, right, right, that's it. Uh, because, uh, my, uh, we don't want them to try to bring for, you, you keep them, you know, just not, you know, we're gonna have to be, um, yeah, I'm pretty excited when I see all hands on deck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board under, under, uh, citizens' comments? Anyone else? Seeing none? Oh, there is someone. Okay, come on up. I'm sorry.
Um, my name is Catherine Clark.
Sorry, say your name again.
Catherine Clark.
Catherine Clark, okay, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to point support on behalf of myself and, uh, several other people that I know, members of the municipal, yeah, local chapter. Um, but we just wanted to wish our support for, uh, the recycling program. We understand it might have to adjust a little bit, if you're gonna drop off at someplace else. But we really want to see it come back, and you would want to say before.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clark. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close it under citizen comments, and we have no public appearances this evening. We have two public hearings. Our first public hearing is to amend the no smoking ordinance for the City of Starkville to revise the smoking location to include cigar lounges under certain restrictions. Um, and I will go, well, I'll tell you what, we'll open it as a public hearing first. I think we have a presentation that the, the advocate is, would like to present. So normally, our public hearings, we give fifteen minutes to one side and fifteen to the other. So, um, we'll go with the pro side first. How about that? If you would, come up and state your name, and if you have a presentation you'd like to make, there is, we got that in the, queued up in the system?
Uh-
Yes, sir. And your name?
My name is John Higgins. I'm the owner of Spring Street Cigar. I'm living two blocks from Mississippi. I grew up in Lewis, Mississippi, went to Mississippi State. And I've long wanted a cigar store in Starkville. There's nothing like Starkville. Um, uh, there is a request for the amendment of the no smoking ordinance. Um, second, let me just, let me just mention that. Um, our desire is to open up a cigar store and lounge in the old mug shop building. So with that, let me tell you who we are first. We are Spring Street Cigars, are the largest premium cigar stores in Mississippi, actually one of the largest in the United States. Um, we are, we are founded in two thousand and fourteen. Um, I currently have four locations. I have a location in Siouxville. I'm on the square in Oxford. I have a store in Boonville, and I have a brand new store under construction in South Haven that will be opening early in two thousand and twenty-one. And obviously, I'd like to start on to do my first store. Um, we are just premium hand-rolled cigars, pikes, and pipe tobacco. We have no base, no cigarettes, no other tobacco products. It's not that we don't want base or cigarettes in our store. We have old hand-rolled premium cigars. We have private memberships available, to a very limited basis, but we do have private memberships in a private area. We do have also public smoking areas. Um, we are a very professional environment within our store. Uh, if you're gonna spend fifteen dollars for a cigar and spend an hour smoking it, you're gonna want a nice private, public, a very professional environment, very clean environment. Let me have the photographs. I'll show you our store. Um, we, we try to make it very comfortable and very appealing for our customers. Uh, we do a lot of educational events and promotions. For instance, we'll teach you how to smoke a cigar. If you don't already know how to smoke a cigar, we'll teach you how to cut and light. We'll teach you the flavors of cigars. We'll take you on trips to Honduras and show you how they're made. And so we do a lot of educational work. Another thing that we're very state and locally involved from a community standpoint. Um, I'm a member of the Board of, uh, Board of Directors for the Boy Scouts of America, uh, so we do a lot of charity work with Boy Scouts, um, cop termus, things of that nature. Uh, we do a lot of work with, uh, first responders. We have a, an annual first responder event where we give away cigars free that's entire day to all first responders in the state. This year, we have almost five hundred first responders in our store. Um, but it's a premium hand-rolled cigar, and basically, there's three components. You have filler, binder, and wrapper. There's between three and nine different types of tobacco in each premium cigar. The main production regions for these cigars are Honduras, Nicaragua, the Dominican Republic. Um, the minimum age of a premium cigar is five years. That's the minimum age. You can have a cigar that's up to twelve years old in my cigarette. Um, only natural tobacco leaves or use nothing else. There's nothing else in that product except natural fat. And one hundred percent roll by hand. It says over two hundred hands touch premium cigar before it's actually finished. I actually have a video that I'd like to show you, uh, and this is a very short snippet of how premium cigars are made. These are the seeds, or actually the plums, and managed by hand. This is, these are the, uh, greenhouses where the seeds are grown to maturity. They're all planted by hand. This is organic soil. In this particular case, this is Nicaragua. I've actually been to this field. Takes about forty-five days to get to the plant to this size. They simply grow, add water, and they're ready to go. There's actually no pesticides used on this. They're picked by hand after about forty-five days in the field, two leaves at a time. And they're taken into the dry and garden, the Currie Barn, where they're actually, they actually maintain not only the plants, but where they're taken from the plants, and they keep very close track of where those leaves are, are taken from the plants, because it determines the actual flavor and taste and strength of the cigar. They spend about a month and a half in the Currie Barn. But they're taken out after the dry, which this is a dry leaf. They're taken down. They're taken down off of the racks, and they're individually put together in bundles and secured in bundles, and then they're fermented. And then they're separated into different qualities of tobacco. And, and as it goes on, I'll continue to talk about the, the business. In general, the, there are, as I mentioned earlier, five to nine different types of tobaccos. Each different region of the country is gonna have different types of, of tobacco, and it's gonna taste very different. And as you can see, they're rolled in individual cigars by hand. So when we talk about hand-rolled, they truly are hand-rolled cigars. By the way, interestingly enough, the cigars that she's putting the bands on right now are those cigars. So those are from Nicaragua from this particular factory. Okay, this is actually a picture of our human orange, Siouxville. Oh, yeah, the, 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 the picture, this one's actually a little bit better back here on the TV. Uh, this is a picture actually of downtown Siouxville. We have over two thousand different types of cigars in our human orange. Once again, this is the largest human orange in Mississippi, one of the largest in the United States. Uh, this is a picture of one of our lounges. Uh, as you can see, this is actually, you can see lockers in the back, smoking area. It looks like a smoking room. Um, this is a picture of our smoking bar. When you come to our, our federal lounge, if we have bars, because you sit there and you, you smoke cigars at our bar, we also have our hard goods for sale, things of that nature. This is the outside of our store in downtown Siouxville. It's very much like the mug shot building, two storied balcony. This actually is one of the oldest buildings in Siouxville. It was built in the nineteen twenties. Uh, this is our floor on the square, an auction. This is our resource being under construction now in South Haven. Um, this is gonna be about a four thousand square foot store as well when we finish the location. Once again, our Starkville plant, very similar to everything else, we're doing a huge selection of premium hand-rolled cigars, private memberships, a private membership area, professional and, uh, public and private smoking lounges. We want a very professional atmosphere. We won't smoking bar downstairs and upstairs. It's got a grate upstairs. We're gonna keep as much of the old historic downtown look of this building as we possibly can. We would like to, uh, possibly put in a group pub to utilize the whole space. I'll, I'll add just a little bit. Uh, what the group pub would look like, it would be something like this. Once again, the picture would be down there. You actually bring the, the beer inside with the glass and closing the, the, the product. So it's almost like artwork. Um, this is actually the equipment we're looking at putting in. It's a micro brewery. So ultimately, what we would like to do, as you can see from the left, the old mug shot sign, we actually keep the sign. We just have to rescan the Spring Street cigars. To be able to make this happen, obviously, we'd have to have smoking capabilities in downtown Starkville for this to happen. So that's, uh, my presentation, as quickly as I could.
Okay.
And, uh, any questions?
Thank you for doing that. So I'm gonna go around and let people ask you questions, and first, you're gonna have to educate me, because I don't know if you, you lost me. It takes an hour to smoke a cigar. I don't, I don't get it. So, it, it, yeah, so I'm gonna ask, uh, why not Cuban? Is that because there's, we still have a ban of some kind on Cuban cigars?
Yes, there is, and it's hard to, um-
Still? Okay.
You can actually, uh, bring Cuban cigars into the United States. You just can't sell it. You can buy Cuban cigars in actually other countries, Canada, for instance, and Europe, and you can bring them back to the United States. And you can actually go to, uh, Cuban yourself and purchase cigars if you wanted to. There's open travel into Cuba now. I've been to Cuba several times myself. And I bring that cigar for all personal consumption, but they're not allowed to be sold in the United States.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more educating question, uh, and that is, is this all soil related? Is the wine Nicaragua, why the Honduras, why? Because like the belt, we could use some, some industry. I'm just curious. Is this purely dirt?
Actually, the only region in the United States that's really good for growing cigar, premium cigar tobacco, is Connecticut. And actually, a lot of premium cigar tobacco is grown in Connecticut, a little bit in Pennsylvania, but mostly Connecticut. It has to do with soil conditions. You can notice that soil that was very rocky- You can notice that soil, it was very rocky, very limy soil, it was, it's a volcanic, uh, soil, and that's the best soil for growing premium cigar tobacco. There's some grown in Mexico, but the majority of tobacco for premium cigars is grown, yes, in the Dominican Republic region, Nicaragua, Honduras, and of course, Jesus. The Cuban tobacco is always used in Cuba, it's not allowed in the United States.
Okay, well, thank you for indulging me. I'm gonna start down at the end with Alderman Vaughn, because I know he has been up to your Siouxville store and is, uh, very excited about this project, so Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor. John, I just wanna say thank you for the presentation, it was a great presentation. A lot of times, your presentation, you give a, I saw some different look, different mindset and what they want, what they're looking for, and how they feel about the project. But thank you so much, and I hope you have a safe trip back home. Thank you, thank you. You two guys have been scotched. Thank you. Mr. Kevin David, thank you also, presented and bringing you on with this project. Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Uh, Vice Mayor Perkins, any questions?
No comments, Mayor. No comments, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Sound like a nice position downtown, what's your problem?
Uh, Alderman Walker?
No comments, Mayor, no questions.
Okay, thank. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Siskel, you wanna talk about cigars?
Um, I get ragged on because I have to smoke the cigar too. And it does take a minute. Uh, uh, anyway, I, I think it's also a great potential addition to the downtown area, and, um, for those who've not read the, the proposed change to the ordinance, um, there are some provisions in there that restrict age, that restrict the location to the leisure and entertainment district, that, um, ensure that there will be appropriate ventilation, either, either in a standalone building or in a condo, would that be the right term?
No, it would not be allowed in condos.
Okay.
But i- if the building, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
I- if the building is adjacent to another building, if it's separated by an impertinible b- barrier or like a firewall?
Right.
Then that's, that's allowed.
So, so we, we're trying very hard to respect the, um, the concepts under our original no smoking, uh, non-smoking ordinance, and I, I think, I think we've hit that sweet spot there.
Very good, thank you very much.
Alderman Carver?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I was just gonna say, a, a few comments, most of mine are, uh, if everybody remembers the discussion on e-cigarettes and vape, and I was in favor of that, and just as long as, you know, we talked about the adequate ventilation and standalone business, and then reading through the documents, um, I agree with everything written as far as not being in a condo development, and, um, secondly, you know, obviously, this is a, a big building for downtown, this is a staple landmark building going back, um, to the Hillbend days and then mugshot, and I'm glad to see something potentially going in there. Um, I'm more concerned with the longevity and stability of the market, but obviously, uh, to each his own, and that's, that's, that's a gentleman's job, but, and not mine, but, uh, and third, immediately, I was thinking of, uh, possibly getting former Chief Nichols up there if we, uh, if this passes, and he's a cigar man, maybe he can help us out and do the rhythm cutting, but that's all.
All right, thanks, thank you, Alderman Carver, I, I appreciate that. So, um, I still have the other half of the entire group, so unless you have something else to share with us, I will ask you to step back, and I will see if anyone wishes to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, do we have anyone wishing to speak against this particular project?
Uh, we have no smoking, our, um, our people life, that we are doing our, we're here to be smoked free. Uh, we don't want to, uh, try to tell them to be redundant to, uh, to make it at heart that, uh, they, they commit one thing and then, uh, they're against the law, so they can be careful that, uh, how you see, uh, by everyone, and you have, uh, smoking, uh, if you want to, uh, to, and they're be careful, we are young, want this to get all worked up, uh, this understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak? Well, and I, and I didn't ask if there's anyone, anyone else wanting to speak in favor of it, so if there was anyone else in favor of it, last shot here. Okay, all right, I will close it as a public hearing, and, uh, we will be taking this matter, uh, at the next board meeting. It has the potential to be, uh, the second public hearing and approval, so that will be at the next, at the next board meeting. Uh, next?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make, uh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I just wanna make, uh, one, one point, I, I believe in, uh, it was just miss, uh, uh, misspoken on your part, I believe, we said anybody looking to vote in our, uh, speak in opposition to this project. I just wanna make sure, clear, that what we would be approving, if this resol- if this, uh, amendment to the ordinance is passed, is not for this particular project, it is a revision of the ordinance for the smoking ban that would allow other projects of similar scope that meet that, uh, change in the ordinance to be allowed in the arts and entertainment district, assuming it meets, uh, the other criteria.
Thank you, Alderman Walker, I appreciate that correction. I did misspeak, and this is about an ordinance, this is not about a project, but the project obviously was, was an example of what would happen under the ordinance, so thank you for, for making that correction. I, I apologize for my misstatement.
Mayor and city attorney?
Mr., uh, Alderman Carver?
How does that, how does what Alderman Walker spoke to, how does that affect electronic cigarette stores?
Those are handled separate and distinct based on the board's previous ordinance. The last iteration was twenty seventeen, so nothing changes there. Alderman Carver?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next public hearing is to adopt and amend the code chapter ninety-eight and the ordinance for the new street map and accept the name changes, uh, and name corrections to the city of Starkville street map in accordance with Mississippi Code sixty-five seven one forty-three sub four, and this is a requirement in order for us to have our new street map and to change names and accept new names, uh, for streets, the existing streets. So, um, I will open this as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now is your opportunity, and either in favor or against, anyone wishing to speak in either favor or against the new street map that the board will be adopting. All right, seeing no one, I will close it as a public hearing, and I will go Alderman Vaughn, for any comments wishing to be made. Alderman Carver, anything that you wish to comment on regarding this public hearing or regarding this, uh, um, this code cha- change, this ordinance change?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Siskel?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, it's closed as a public hearing, that will be our, uh, that will also be on our board's action, um, at the next board meeting. All right, uh, the next item that is actually up for consideration by the board is gonna be under, uh, financing, that's our claim stock, do I have a motion?
Approval?
Just a second, go up a second.
Sorry.
Second, second from Alderman Beatty, by, by affirmation, if you have anyone who wishes to discuss this item before we put it up for a vote. Hearing none, if you would, answer yea or nay, as a city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Siskel. Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Good.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
All right, by vote of five to two, motion carries. That takes us, uh, out of our open session and puts us into a need to go into closed determination session to determine the need for executive session. Do I have a vote?
Mayor, uh, if there's no objection, I would like to just note we accept the chief's recommendation unless someone feels the need to go into closed executive session based on what I've read.
All right, Alderman Little, that's a motion. Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Little to, uh, accept the chief's, um, recommendation and not to go into closed session or, or executive session, and I heard a second, or is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
I have a second from the Vice Mayor, um, to hear if I've got any, any, uh, opposition, if there's anyone who wishes to do otherwise. All right, seeing none, if you would please answer yea or nay, as a city clerk calls your name, and this is a motion to accept the chief's recommendation for, uh, under the power of personnel.
Alderman Carver. Yea.
Alderman Siskel. Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Yea.
Uh, all right, that is unanimous motion, that, and that concludes our, um, board meeting for today. I do have one thing to read about this work session that'll be coming up, so let me read that, and then we'll, uh, get a motion to recess. There'll be a work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen on Friday, December the eleventh, twenty twenty. That is in preparation for our regular, our business meeting, uh, Friday the fifteenth, uh, Tuesday the fifteenth. At ten o'clock, we will hold this work session at Starkville City Hall, located at one-ten West Main Street, on the second floor of the conference room. The public and media are invited to attend, and this will be posted, uh, within an hour after ours close of this meeting, so. That being said, do I have a motion to recess?
Please.
I have a motion to recess from Alderman Vaughn, go up a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Siskel, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as a city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Siskel.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea. Yea.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Is unanimous, thank you all, we are recessed until we come into the work session in preparation for the fifteenth, uh, which will be our, uh, recess meeting.
We might have a good night.
Everybody? Night, everybody.